Good evening again. My name is Rick Oden and I am President of the Pikne-Putnam Hamburg Health Chamber of Commerce. This is what, the night time? I've said that tonight? You know, this is, uh, we're doing all different segments. This is a candidate forum that we are putting on for contested races that will be on the ballot and on November 3rd. We're filming this on October 3rd. These segments will be shared for social media and we'll have, be able to share those so the candidates can get the word out, not just to the people that were here tonight, but it's there. So, questions have been coming in from the audience and we've had different candidates. So our next position that we're going is for the County Commissioner, District 8. We have two candidates. We have Jay Gross. Jay was appointed as a County Commissioner when Dennis Dolan passed away, who served us for many years. And Jay is a Republican and then Jay won his, won his primary. And then the next candidate is Martin Lake, the Democrat, for, for that position. So, Martin will go first with you. So if you guys can each give about four or five minutes to talk about your position and then we'll have questions after.
Hello. My name is Martin Lake and I'm running for County Commission's 8th District. I would like to thank the Pikne-Putnam Hamburg Health Chamber of Commerce, Board of Directors, and Rick Oden for hosting this forum. Thank you, sir. I bring 14 years of community banking and retail business ownership experience with me. I have a Bachelor of Business Administration degree with an emphasis in entrepreneurship. A synopsis of the current mission statement of Livingston County could be to provide the mandated county services while staying within our means. I agree with that mission. I agree the government should stay within its preset boundaries and I agree with the burden of fiscal responsibility. I believe that it should be the intent of all County Commissioners to maintain and improve property values and the standard of living in Livingston County. I will do this by focusing primarily on environmental concerns and businesses. Something that I want to avoid as your County Commissioner are lawsuits stemming from bad resolutions. Your County Health and Human Services Committee for the County Commission passed a resolution to eliminate the mask mandate in all Livingston County buildings. This is against the recommendation of the Livingston County Health Department. What are we paying the Health Department for if we're not going to listen to their recommendations? There's an old saying that if you represent yourself in court, your lawyer is a fool. My interpretation is that you're paying professionals to make health decisions for the county and your commissioners are legislating against those decisions, then your commissioners are fools. Fools playing with your taxes. Let me explain. Most of us know that you have to show up for work as part of your job. There's not a lot of choice there. For the people that work in the county buildings, the same is true. They have to be there. So if the County Commission votes against the recommendations of the County Health Department and removes the, removes the mask mandate in county buildings, do they put the lives of county employees who have to be there at risk? If a county employee or a member of their family die as a result of COVID that they contracted after the mask mandate is removed, do they or their state have just cause to sue the county? If a patron is exposed to COVID at a Livingston County building, do they have just cause to sue? Think on this as it's your tax dollars that are being put at risk. Millions of your tax dollars. Not requiring people to wear masks, to allow people to make their own decisions in this matter, regardless of who it puts at risk, may be allowable under the law, but in this case, it's plain wrong-headed and places people and property at risk. As your County Commissioner, I would fight to protect your tax dollars from this type of legislative negligence. I like living in a county where the property taxes are lower than that of the neighboring counties and I think it's foolish to put those taxes at risk to make some kind of half-baked political statement. It's not the Commissioner's money that's being put at risk, it's yours. On the subject of lawsuits against the county, I don't like property taxes. I consider them to be rent. If you don't pay, you lose your right to live there. That's rent. However, in the overall scheme of things, I do like most of what property taxes pay for. I like good school systems, law enforcement and other first responders, infrastructure, proper drainage, and so on. I'm a big fan of these things provided in return for our tax dollars. I'm not a big fan of tax dollars being paid out in lawsuits that were easily preventable by using sound judgment and I'm not a fan of any non-disclosures being tied to any settlements of those lawsuits. All counties get sued, all governments do. It's an unfortunate part of making decisions. It's your tax dollars and you have a right to know how many of those tax dollars were paid out to cover bad decisions by those in office so you know not to vote for them anymore. For the success of small and medium businesses, I want the County Commission to regularly review the burdens that the county is placing on businesses to make sure that we do not increase the complexity of opening and operating a business in Livingston County. As a former small business owner, there's not much that's more frustrating than a government entity that couldn't care less about your business's success, but make sure that you have a difficult time in filling out any forms that may lower your tax burden. If a new business is locating near the Livingston County line, I want them to decide to locate on the Livingston side due to our friendly business climate. Every 10 to 15 years, there's some sort of economic crisis that causes large businesses to lay off thousands of employees. A number of those employees start small businesses to replace the lost income and in turn become employers to themselves. I want those business owners to succeed and to open their businesses here. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is the Republican Jay Gross.
Thanks, Rick. I also would like to thank Rick and the Chamber unit here for the opportunity to be here this evening and to present my case for why I should be retained on the Livingston County Board of Commission. As was mentioned earlier, I was appointed to the Board in April to fill a vacancy on the passing of Dennis Dolan. So I went on the County Commission now for almost six months. Main reason I agreed to run, to be appointed to the council is that I'm a fiscal conservative. I believe that we as individual homeowners, taxpayers, try our very best to live within our means and I feel that government at all levels should do the same. Besides being a fiscal conservative, I get to that point because I have a Bachelor of Science degree in Business Administration focusing on accounting and finance. I've worked for General Motors and EDS for over 30 years in, in many areas of accounting and finance and so I've got a lot of experience in asking the tough questions, particularly with respect to budgeting, forecasting, monitoring, and reporting on how a business entity is doing. I've been endorsed by quite a few folks in Livingston County, elected officials and others. And I'm a member of St. Patrick's Catholic Church in Brighton. I serve on the Finance Committee for that church. And I'm a member of the Knights of Columbus. I am a member of Right to Life with Michigan and I support the Second Amendment to be able to bear arms. And so far, my position on the County Commission has been very enlightening. I have to admit, when I was appointed, I didn't know a heck of a lot about county operations, but I've participated in about 15 budget reviews. The county currently is working on its budget for fiscal year 2021 and I have been really impressed with the work being done by all the department heads in developing their budget for the next year, particularly in view of the fact that we were uncertain about our state revenue sharing because of the COVID pandemic. So far, we are getting the amount of revenue that we're supposed to be getting from the state and the forecast for next year is looking positive. One of my big concerns is I want to maintain the low tax rate that the county enjoys. It's the lowest tax rate in the entire state of Michigan of any county and we enjoy a AAA bond rating. One of my focuses of attention is that, like many other jurisdictions, Livingston County has an unfunded liability for the retirement of existing employees as well as of those that have retired already. I'm proud to say that the county has been doing an excellent job of trying to reduce the amount of unfunded liability. We're currently at about 75%, which is much better than many other jurisdictions. Ideally, we'd like to be at 100%. We are working towards that. And I'll be very pleased if we are able to make a substantial payment into the retirement system in the coming fiscal year. I found that my time on the Board is not a political environment. I think we, at the present time, all of the Commissioners are Republicans, but there are some members of the Board who don't always agree with others on certain issues. But I have to acknowledge that in my time on the Board, there's been many, many votes that are eight to nothing or seven to one or six to two. We have not had to suffer the consequences of partisanship. So I'm very proud of that. I'd like to ask the population to retain me on the County Commission. I look forward to serving as a Commissioner for the next two years. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Jay, because Martin went first on the other, you'll go first here. And it's interesting because the first question has to deal with something you just mentioned. You talked about the taxes being so low and the taxes being that low in Livingston County. The question is, is are our taxes low when we get to brag about low taxes, but should our taxes be a little higher and that we'd get better services? And are there some things that aren't being funded just so that we can brag about low taxes?
It's a big question. In my time on the Board, I have not encountered any situation where we are cutting back on any services to any residents of the county. Many of the departments have cut back on their staffing because of the COVID pandemic. We have a lot of people working from home, in a virtual situation. Some of the departments have people rotating through the office to make sure there's a presence there if the public comes in and needs assistance. We are being very careful with our expenditures. And to that extent, shortly after the pandemic broke, our County Health Department developed a plan for the county to operate with the emergency of the pandemic and we instituted a hiring freeze and a freeze on discretionary spending. And sticking to those commitments to freeze hiring has been difficult because we've had situations where in some departments, employees have either left voluntarily or have retired and we're not able to fill those positions because of the hiring freeze. So the County Board is being very diligent and sometimes painfully so to maintain our commitment to reducing our expenditures and providing the services as best possible under the circumstances.
Martin?
That's something that would need to be looked at. The thought of needing to raise taxes just right off the bat without looking at a specific item is, you know, I think it would obviously need some investigation. I know that in the past, the county has done some investigation in certain areas and one of the areas that we need to look at, and I'm not saying more taxes, but definitely something to look at specific to what's being spent, what needs to be spent, is for example, senior services. The Livingston Leadership Council on Aging produced a document in 2018, the Executive Summary of Senior Needs. It's available on the county website, by the way, if anyone wants to take a look. And it basically estimates we're going to see a 39% growth in the number of seniors in the county from 2018 to 2030. It underscores the lack of funding and resources available to the seniors in Livingston County. 12 key areas of focus for improvement were listed. I'm not going to list them, but obviously there's room for improvement. Should the items that are listed be implemented? See, that's a whole nother question. Who's going to pay for them? Do we have to raise taxes? Is there going to be money from other sources? Grants? I'm a big fan of grants. Should the county foot the bill? What are the other counties doing? And what has the recent pandemic changed specific to those priorities that have been listed? They're all good questions and are all worthy of consideration. I want to hope and ensure that Livingston County does not continue to send the wrong message to our senior population. I envision a county that's supportive and desirable for seniors to live in. The same would be true for other areas of the county. It just depends on what's brought up, what's shown is lacking, and the funds. I'm not a big fan of reinventing the wheel. I like to use proven things as far as solutions to any problem that comes up. So hopefully, anything that comes up can be solved without throwing more money at it.
Good. Thank you. Martin, you'll go first on the next question. And we talked about Dennis Dolan, who was the County Commissioner, and one of his goals was to bring a building to town and along with what you were just talking about with the senior population, is he was looking to build, bring a building to town for Meals on Wheels. Right now, they operate out of Heartland's Educational Services Building and they're very cramped quarters. So what are your thoughts on providing a building for Meals on Wheels and helping those seniors?
I would love to be able to provide a building for Meals on Wheels. However, I would want to do it in a way that's kind of fair for everybody involved. I'm under the impression that there's a couple of different funding organizations that are kind of feuding over that now and I think that's something that needs to come back to the table and be discussed. I don't think Livingston should pay more than their fair share, that's for sure. But in the same respect, I believe seniors that have a need for this, this is a very critical service, that that service needs to continue for those. And I think it would be important to consistently publish the usage and the numbers tied to something like a Meals on Wheels to help get the citizens of the county to understand how it's needed, how much it's needed, and to then, you know, kind of get behind what can we do? Because there's other methods as well other than, you know, taxes.
Jay?
It's ironic that you bring up the subject of Meals on Wheels because being on the County Board of Commissioners, we have tried to deal with that during the course of the summer. And one of the things that we have found, as was mentioned, Dennis Dolan's hope and dream was to have a building devoted exclusively to the Meals on Wheels program. And there are a number of us on the County Board of Commissioners who are fully supportive of that goal. However, at the present time, there are some significant problems that preclude us from making that dream come through. Part of that is that at some point in time in the past, the Livingston County Meals on Wheels program expanded into Western Oakland County, to the point where right now, over 50% of the recipients of the Meals on Wheels are Oakland County residents. When Oakland County was approached to help fund the ground swell funds needed in order to get a grant from the State of Michigan to facilitate building of the building, Oakland County refused to participate. And they claim that the reason for that was, was because the existing Meals on Wheels program resides in Livingston County. And so the Meals on Wheels program asked the county to come up with a half a million dollars to help them secure a bond grant, be able to build a building. And for a variety of reasons, the County Board of Commissioners voted not to do that at this point in time. I fully expect that that issue will come back to us again because there is a definite need of a good program facility for the Meals on Wheels program and the citizens that take advantage of that. In addition to that, Meals on Wheels, in their approach to us, indicated that one of their operations involved a catering business and that was a bit of a surprise to the Commissioners and we found out that they were not doing a catering business as we normally think of, you know, doing wedding receptions and the like, but instead they've been providing some meals to Livingston County Catholic Services. Those, that organization is paying for those meals. And they've been providing meals to the Salvation Army for the summer school lunch program for children. I don't know if that program was running this summer with the pandemic, but so over the years, Meals on Wheels has kind of expanded into other areas and that's resulted in a crunch of their space and their ability to provide meals. And so I think one concern was that possibly they need to scale back and focus on the needs of seniors. It's just my own opinion. But the problem with Livingston County is very real and with respect to the relationship to Oakland County, I'm hoping that we'll be able to work something out in the future.
Okay. Jay, you'll go first on the next question. Do you support the Wally Mass Transit System that's proposed and if so, how would you pay for it? That's the line between Livingston County and Washtenaw County. Ann Arbor?
I have to admit, I've not done a lot of research into this. I personally would be supportive of some sort of a mass transportation system. I know, I have friends who live in the Brighton area and work in Ann Arbor and they talk about the commute on US 23 and certainly the portion of US 23 that was expanded to three lanes last year has helped a lot. And I know the state is planning on extending that three lane all the way up to I-96. So, once that's completed, I don't know if that necessarily is going to eliminate the need for the Wally Transportation System, but the big issue there is funding and sources of funding. And at this point in time, Livingston County does not have the funding to participate in that as much as we might like to. So I'm hopeful as time goes by, we'll get a clearer picture of exactly what's needed and then try to figure out ways to meet those needs.
Next.
Yeah. I think access to public transportation is important, especially in times of economic downturn. I know the need for public transportation, for example, for our senior population, was one of the things on the list of items that needed improvement by the Livingston Leadership Council on Aging in that 2018 report I had mentioned earlier. Mass transit between Livingston and Ann Arbor, that's one of those situations where I would want to really kind of look at the numbers and see if it's going to make sense. You know, what are the, who's going to ride on it? Who's going to pay for it? It's kind of interesting, a lot of times, people who are commuting now and then you offer them some kind of mass transit and they have to decide between riding in their own car, not being tied into any kind of set schedule, and they'll stick with riding in their own car. So I would like to see some honest numbers of how often it would be used, what's the cost going to be? Usage of public transportation needs to always be monitored closely with regular reporting on the volume of usage and the amount of taxpayer subsidies that are required to maintain the needed service on a per-trip basis. I want to know every time somebody goes from Livingston to Ann Arbor, that the taxpayers of Livingston have to pay $3. Round trip, one way, either way. The end goal is to find ways to increase the usage in order to minimize the need for subsidies with comparison information from neighboring counties, et cetera, is playing a role on how to best maximize these services. But it would really be a number crunch and I would want to see numbers that I felt confident were real. Basically fall back into the test, you know, when you get the numbers in front of you and you're ready to look at it and see if this is something that's, is it truly needed? Is it fair to everyone who's paying for it? Is it going to build any goodwill and is it going to be beneficial to everyone who's concerned? Ripping off the rotary a little bit there, but that's kind of the measure test I like to use on just about every decision.
Okay. The last question then, it has to do with economic development. Livingston County contracts with Spark and, you know, Livingston County's basically been known as a bedroom community where a lot of people leave the county and go work someplace else. So how do we bring more jobs here so that people here can work right here? So, and Martin, you'll be first on this next question.
A lot of the jobs that have come in were, have always been tied to smaller businesses and I think, you know, you hit a valid point and these businesses are made to, to great extent, support people when they're in the morning or when they're in the evening and that they're working out of town. I work out of town. I commute to Farmington Hills. I think ultimately, that's something worth looking at because I'm going to question the whole concept of, do we need to bring the type of jobs into Livingston County where people are not commuting? Are we broken because a number of people commute? I think it's worth looking at. Bringing in jobs is always considered to be a good thing and I would have to agree as long as they're not tearing up nature, they're not polluting horribly or anything along those lines. I'm all for it. But are we broken because we don't have as many factories as they have in Oakland County? Are we broken because we don't have as many factories as they have in the Downriver area? I don't think so. Can we use more jobs in our area? I think that's always a yes. So if there are opportunities to bring in more jobs, I would definitely think that we should look at those. But I, you know, that's just something worth looking at and you have to take it on a case by case basis.
Jay?
The Spark Initiative, my sense is that hasn't worked out the way it was hoped for. I know particularly here in Hamburg Township, the Board of Trustees and the Township Board are very concerned that they have not been able to bring small businesses, medium businesses of any sort into Hamburg Township. And they had hoped that Spark would provide the impetus for something like that to occur. And I don't have the answer to that. I know that particularly in the Brighton-Hollow area, there's been instances where space has become available for businesses to establish themselves and parent companies from out of state come in and they have to survey the workforce, the space available, taxes, all the other variables and things that would be involved with establishing a business and providing jobs, and they've turned away. They've determined for whatever reason that this is not a good area for their particular businesses. And so I think we need to study that situation, talk to these people, find out the particulars of what their concerns are, what their issues were, why a piece of property in Hamburg Township wouldn't work for their particular enterprise or for any of our Townships for that matter. And I think we probably would need to revisit the Spark arrangement and find out if there isn't a better approach to trying to bring businesses into the area.
Gentlemen, if you could each spend about 30 seconds and Jay, you'll go first, is just why somebody should vote for you and...
I feel that folks should retain me as my signs indicate spread throughout the area. I've been on the County Commission almost six months now. I have learned an awful lot. Every day, I'm learning more. And it's been exciting, it's been rewarding and I have a great feel of contribution to the community. I vote, every vote I take, I vote the way I feel is best for the residents of this county. And sometimes it puts me at odds with, with some of my colleagues, but that's the way it is. I vote the way I feel is best and I will continue to do that if I'm elected for the next two years. And I respectfully ask for your vote that I may continue.
Martin?
My opponent was appointed to his position by the current Commissioners. He was not elected by the residents of the 8th District. The current County Commissioners are not the sort to appoint someone who's going to vote in a different direction than they do or one who asks the hard questions. They appointed someone who thinks and votes along the same lines they do and he has. I don't think that the Commission needs to be stirred up or fought on every issue. However, I do believe that we need better disclosures and more transparency specific to who is the direct benefactors of the decisions made by the Commission. Better stewardship of taxpayer money, sending a strong message to those who contaminate our natural resources, that Livingston County will not tolerate any threat to our health, safety, and enjoyment of our resources, and to ensure that the climate for small and medium businesses is not made more complicated. I hope that you will vote for me on November. My name's Marty. Thank you.
Okay. You have heard the two candidates for District 8 for the County Commissioner, Martin Lake and Jay Gross.
Thank you.
Next.
Good evening. My name is Rick Noden, and I am President of the Pinkney-Putnam Hamburg Health Chamber of Commerce. We're getting to the last of the evening, and we've done a number of segments of the candidate forum. Our audience is getting lesser and lesser, but remember, we share this on social media, so the word gets out to everybody. Plus, we've been blessed to be able to have the Livingston Daily Press in Argus that's covering us tonight. So, we hopefully, that some of the feedback that you're giving, people are giving during tonight will be there. So, we always do candidate forums for every election, and we're doing the contested races. And so, people up here were in, were here because there was a contested race for the primary, so they were here just a couple of months ago for the primary. And we had four candidates move forward, and then there were two Democrats that weren't there because they weren't contested in the primary, and they've moved on. It's sad to note that one of the contestants for the candidate, one of the candidates, Annette Keebley, who was a trustee, has passed away. And so, her name is on the ballot, but through all the, I've talked to Mike Dolan, the clerk and everything like that, so regardless if people vote for Annette, their votes will not count for Annette. So, we've mourned that loss. Annette was a very, very dedicated trustee. She was, I know, I talked to Pat Hold, who's the supervisor, and he said she was on so many committees, and she was so dedicated. I will tell you, whenever I was at the Township offices, she was there, and she was very dedicated to what she did. So, we will miss her. So, but we've got candidates that are running, so we have three, two Democrats, Marie Jopich and Cindy Mishnewich, and neither of those are with us this evening. The other candidates, then, that we have, and they're all incumbents, is Bill Hahn, Pat Hughes, and Chuck Menzies. So, if we could have each of you give three or four minutes, and tell us about yourselves, and what you think about the future of Hamburg Township, and why you should be reelected, and then we'll have questions. Let's start with Bill at the far end.
I miss Annette already. I wish she was up here with us, so we'd have four of us that won the primary were here. But I'm Bill Hahn. I've been on the Hamburg Township Board for 12 years. I'm a member of the Personnel Committee, the Utilities Committee, the Personnel Committee, and I'm a board member of the Livingston Community Water Authority. Just by way of background, I spent 30 years at Ford Motor Company in various engineering and management jobs. I have the, my BS degree I got from Purdue University, and I also have a Master's degree in Business, and a Master's degree in Economics, both of those degrees from University of Detroit. My major accomplishment in the 12 years has been the establishment, design and establishment of the Finance Control Book. And some earlier comments that people made is, sometimes it's difficult to find out, where's all the money? Where's the expenses? Where's the tax revenues? What's the cash flow look like? And over, over the years, I helped design and develop that control book, which is on our website, so anybody out there in the audience can log on to our webpage and find out how much money we have in different banks and different accounts. So, it's all transparent. Second major effort was Pat Hold and I started the Road Commission a while back. And if you drive around in Hamburg Township, you see a lot of roads being paved, Hamburg, Crest, Chosin, Swarthough, and Lysko Linings, Lee Road. And we also have led the efforts, or helped lead the efforts, to get 14 subdivisions paved by helping 14 different subdivisions set up what we call SADs. And we issued a $3.3 million bond that the homeowners will pay. And when we issued the bond, Hamburg Township, by the way, had a AA+ bond rating, which we're pretty proud of. I mean, that's phenomenal. I've also worked with the, setting up reserves. So, we've looked at all the assets that Hamburg has, and how, what's the life expectancy, how much is it going to cost to replace? And over the years, we've been setting aside reserves, so that when they wear out, or whatever, get disposed, we've got money already set aside to pay for anything that we need to buy. That includes fire trucks, police cars, paving the roads, fixing the roofs, and so on. And we've continued to, or I have continued to focus on the flood issues that we have on our waterways. We have many, many homes on the chain of lakes, and I've led the effort, starting in 2005, I helped set up the Flood Committee. And I'm still actively involved in the Flood Committee, including harvesting weeds to minimize flooding. So, by the way, I want to compliment Livingston County Road Commission, because they've been very, very helpful in supporting Hamburg and getting our roads paved, and they've done a good job, and we like working with them, so.
Okay. Thanks, Bill. Pat Hughes is our next candidate.
It's been my privilege to serve my home community for 11 years as Deputy Clerk, for two of the Township Clerks. The Deputy Clerk can do just about everything that the clerk does when the clerk is not available, except vote on the Township Board. In March of this year, I was appointed to fill out the vacancy on the Township Board, which unfortunately occurred with the death of Trustee Jim Nielsen, who happened to be the first clerk that I worked for. And I'm wearing a pin tonight that Jim gave me that says Patricia Hughes, Hamburg Township. As trustee, I do vote on the seven-person Township Board, and I was placed on the Board in March. And I'm concerned that we get value for our tax dollars. Not necessarily saying that we need to be the lowest taxes, but we need to be sure that we're getting value for our dollar, and I think that we are. I want to talk about three of my priorities, because I could go on for a long time, and we're already past the seventh inning stretch. Let's just pick a couple of things. My priorities are to keep Hamburg Township a great place to live, and I put a high priority on our police and our fire departments, because we want to be a safe community. There's no point in having these lovely lakes and recreational things if we are not feeling safe to go out and use them. And our fire department does an incredible number of medical runs and calls, as well as taking care of, fortunately, the fires that come out. So, we want to keep it a great place to live. I'm very interested in the environment, because our big assets, we're not a huge downtown, we're not, you know, a thriving metropolis, but we are the largest population in Livingston County for jurisdiction, based on the 2010 Census. But our claim to fame are our lakes, and our rivers, and our parks, and the Township, those are our amenities, and it's important that we keep them and keep them safe. We have concerns like invasive species, and the lakes filling up with weeds and algae and those kinds of things. And I will say that I have a Master's in Biology. I am very interested in nature. I find that very soothing. Our residents tell me that they really don't want to live in asphalt and concrete city. They want to keep it as wonderfully natural as we can. And then that takes me to the master plan, which is how a township designs for the future, where it wants growth to come, how it's going to manage that growth. And I'm a little disappointed that it's so hard to get the residents to participate in that planning process. We did pretty well this last time when we did the five-year update of the master plan. But we really need to hear what people want. And the last thing is, I want to say, is that we've heard earlier from the Livingston County folks on how we are an aging population in Livingston County. And when people live on fixed incomes, I'm focused on this value for our tax dollar, because we don't want to be taxed out of our homes because we're on a retirement income. I think that it has helped to be in the Township Office as a full-time employee, as a Deputy Clerk, to see what our departments do, to understand the scope of what a township, a general law township can do. And I've had 11 years of talking to residents at the counter and on the telephone, and have a pretty good idea of what they want the township to be, and what they don't want the township to be. So, I think I'll save a few things for the closing remarks, but that's where I'm coming from.
Thanks, Pat. Next candidate is Chuck. You should pick up, though, I think they've got it set, so they'll pick up for it.
Yeah, I want to thank Rick and the chamber. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight and speak in support for reelection. I just want to go on to what Bill said, is that Annette Keebley was a valuable trustee. She not only cared for the community, cared for the people, but she was, her and her husband, Bob, are very good friends, my wife and I. Over the last four years, I think this township has been run in a very reasonable and progressive manner, which is a benefit, obviously, to our community. I was part of it, and I wish to remain part of it. I bring in experience, the knowledge, the skills to continue the process of keeping the projects on task. I have the technical administrative experience to go along with understanding on how local government works. I'm aware of the responsibilities that it takes moving this community forward. I know I can be effective. I feel that I'm seeking reelection for the right, for the right purposes, right reasons. I believe to be part of the community, you should be active in it. My wife and I, Pat, we've been residents in Hamburg for over 33 years. Since, from day one, I became active. I began attending various board meetings. The former supervisor, the late Harry Bader, years ago, appointed me to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and later to the Planning Commission. From that, I went to very, I attended a lot of meetings, board meetings, I got to know the various former trustees, I went to a lot of training. Eventually, when I retired, I felt it was time to move up and move from the chairs. I had the experience, I felt I ran for the Board. And I was lucky enough, and I was fortunate enough to be elected. You can review my record. I have no hidden agenda. I vote on conscience, facts, and for common sense. I'm committed to preserve and even improve the services provided by this township. As Bill mentioned, we have a AA+ bond rating for standard pores. Our roads, as Bill mentioned, I take pride in being part of this, to have these roads. Townships do not receive money from the state for roads. We took it upon ourselves to have the citizens vote on the millage. It was the citizens that decided for this, and obviously, a millage is a tax. But it was needed. We weren't going to get help from the state, the township doesn't receive money. Thanks, with cooperation from the county, we took on that task, and I feel proud of that. I feel proud that we have a good parks and recreation system. Our senior center is very active. Even with the Corona going on, we still were able to provide services. Part of this, I would like to thank the employees during this, during this pandemic. The employees still stepped up and provided a service that was needed. We didn't miss a step during this process, and it's still going on. I have, I'm retired mental health, social service, teacher, and I have a Master's in Education. I have the background of working with people. I still have the spirit, I still have the energy and the dedication needed to be reelected. I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck. Okay, I've got a number of questions, and only because I know the three of you, and because of our matter of time here. If you don't have a whole lot extra to add, you don't have to keep going on, and we'll just say, "I agree with the other person," so if, so we can get through all the questions and stuff. So, Chuck, you're going to go first on the next one. Earlier in this evening, it came up with the Drain Commissioner, they talked about recycling, and some things that he's done and stuff like that. Where do you see that the Township's position should be with recycling and helping? There are some Townships that have recycling. I think Hamburg used to do some of it, and I know there's some that are doing cardboard recycling, some of the Townships are doing cardboard recycling. So, how do you see that? And along with that, since we're talking about recycling, also with garbage, we talk about our new roads, and there's been a complaint in Hamburg Township a lot, that there are too many garbage trucks that go through. So, what do you think about one garbage truck system throughout the whole Township?
Let me go back to the end question about the garbage. Believe me, it's been talked about a lot. Years ago, it went on the ballot, I believe, and people voted it down. I had no problem one garbage, because I know ourself, we live on a dirt road, we have probably, every day, there's two or three garbage trucks going through, trash trucks. And I understand this. We pay, our association doesn't pay, we pay, I pay quarterly myself, my wife and I, from my own pocket. To have a Township-wide trash pickup, garbage pickup, would have to be covered, to be paid for, it'd have to be a millage. A millage is another tax. I have no problem, and actually, you think about it, for a millage, if people are paying quarterly like I am, to have a millage, it'd probably be cheaper to pay it through the, through the millage, through the tax, than it would be to pay out of your own pocket quarterly. If the people would want it, I have no problem putting it on, putting it out there, see if the people want it. But again, to have garbage pickup to, to be covered by the Township, it would be an extra tax. Besides that, also, is, we would have to have coverage for the Township. Now, I understand if, every day, people, their trash isn't picked up, so who are they going to call? They're probably going to, hopefully, they're going to call the trash pickup, the garbage company. But if not, they're going to call the Township. We have to have somebody answer the phone. Is this an extra burden, an extra task for some of our employees? So, as far as recycling, you're right, we used to have recycling. I would have no problem. That would be part of the, part of the millage, if we would have the garbage pickup. We do have a Township cleanup, we have a river cleanup. Bill and I have been active in that for years. But we also have a Township cleanup in the spring, early spring. It's advertised, we have recycling, and the county's been very helpful picking things up. But anyways, I could go on about this, but...
Okay. Pat?
I would be in favor of taking it back to the people. It's been a while. I would be very concerned that we don't focus just on the cost of it. I think we should be able to get better. I pay quite a, quite a bit for the quarterly service, and the diesel add-on money that they keep putting down there for, it just keeps going higher and higher. But I want to be careful that as a Township Board, when we contract with a garbage company, that we're very careful to be sure that we get an out. Because if people are not happy with their service, if these people aren't doing what we're paying them to do, I think we want to be able to say, we don't have to wait three years, or five years, or whatever. So, with the vote from the public, and with good contract negotiation, I think it would be fine.
Bill?
I apologize for being so blunt to answer this question, but there's no way am I going to support a single trash hauler. The reason I don't support it is it would require additional headcount at the Township, and that's got costs that goes with it. And... And I've been a very strong proponent of trying to maintain or reduce headcount, not increase headcount. The other comment I have is when the subdivisions come in and talk to us, I recommend that they negotiate with their trash hauler, whether it's Advanced or whoever their hauler is, to provide recycle. And we recycle trash in my area, in my subdivision, it's not subdivision, but we have recycle with Advanced and it works very well. So I carry two dumpsters out during trash pickup, week or day, and it works good for us, so.
Good. Pat, you're first on the next one. I think you mentioned it too, is our lakes are our pride and joy here in our area. So how do we protect our lakes in maintaining them, not only with the chemical problem, the PFAS, but also with the weed situation and making sure the levels are there? I happen to live on Zuki Lake and the levels have been going up and down a whole lot. And so how do we maintain, how do we maintain our lakes and that natural resource that we have?
Well, several things have already happened and need to improve in how they happen. The PFAS, what we can do in the township is make sure we're not putting more in as the township residents, as the 21,000 people live here. The township, particularly supervisor, was very active when we first had the PFAS is coming down the Huron River and so the fish couldn't be eaten in Hamburg Township. So there's some of that that you can do, but a lot of this is done at the state level and the federal level with the regulations. So I think as residents, we need to make sure that we're not contributing more within our section of the rivers and to be aware of what's going on and speak to our Congress people and our state representatives. We did take the action of combining with Washtenaw County to try to control some of the invasive species. That didn't go as well as we would like with the permitting, but you run into, the snail darter has more environmental support than maybe using your lake for recreation or keeping it healthy. But we've had to work with a good sewer system to protect the lakes as well as we can, to make sure that we aren't adding too much sodium with the things getting into the water, to try to do the weed harvesting, to maintain the lake. But yes, they are our crown jewels and they affect our property taxes if they fill up and turn into beet bugs, I think, so.
Good.
That's important. And I'd just like to say to Bill, my dear friend Bill over here, I think that we can work on making sure that we don't have to have headcount. We need to be creative on how we get those vendors to be responsible and to make sure that that's the number that you call. So I'm not willing to give up that easily until we do some digging and some contracting negotiations.
Bill, I know you've got connections to the lakes, so what do you say about the lakes?
Yeah, I spent a lot of time on the water. I have two major comments. We've, in Hamburg, we've contracted with Washtenaw County to take care of the weeds and the harvest, the weeds on the chain. And I think the Washtenaw County, I think her name is Laura, correct me if I'm wrong.
Lauren.
Yeah. I think does a pretty good job, given the tough issues with controlling weeds. It's not an easy answer. Now, one of the things that we're going to be suggesting to her is that when the contractor comes out with the harvesting, the weed harvester, that if possible, it would be ideal to have one or two people that is a spokesperson for each of the lakes. I volunteer to do Gallagher because I live on Gallagher. And it's important that that person actually spend time on the weed harvester to point out to the contractor again and again and again, "Here's some bad spots for the weeds. Make sure you get this section or that section." And that's exactly what I do when I have the harvester. It's a company called PLM that we harvest the weeds from the bottom of Orr Lake down to Hamburg Road Bridge, which is the major flood issue where the weeds back up the water. So once a year, we've been harvesting the weeds. But when we do that, I'm physically on the boat frequently, pointing out, I know where the weed, the bad section of weeds are, and make sure that they get cut. And then work with the harvester to deposit the weeds. We dump them over by our sewage plant and they compost down. But it's been working pretty well. Costs us about 12,000 bucks a year just to do that section of the river. But those are my two main comments.
Chuck?
Yeah, well, it's been covered, obviously, with the weed harvesting. But we also just add to, not just the weed harvesting, and we have some ordinances. I mean, it's obviously, we talked about people with the fertilizers. I live on the river. I've watched the river go from rocky bottom to weeds and it's a little bit of everything. It's runoff and from the runoff, we have to go, you know, with our planning, with master plans and site plans, I mean, as far as having setbacks, educating the people with the fertilizer. I know our local hardware sells the fertilizer that doesn't have the high phosphorus in it. But you have to look at that, with our ordinance, we have the ordinance, again, you know, for the fertilizers, we also have setback ordinances for planning for any new homes. I know we have a natural river plan with, we have a few that's still undeveloped or could be developed with bridges, high peaks, bluffs. And any new homes going on, we have them set back off the bluffs. I know if I'm going to build a big home, I'm going to want to overlook the river, but too bad. I mean, the bluffs are, is one of a great amenity when you take, when you're on the river. You go down the river all the time. You know what I'm talking about.
Yep.
So anyways, it's covered. We have it all.
Bill, you'll be next on the next one. And you, I know you had mentioned it because you were helping spearhead it, but isn't there a renewal of the roads millage? And so where is that going to continue? And how do we make sure?
I brought it up because I was going to bring that up right at the end. But we have a one mill, again, on the ballot. And I hope our residents vote for it. Just by way of history, Pat Hole and I tried to get a, with the road commission, a two mill passed a few years back and it did not pass. And the calls kept coming into the township, "Please fix our roads. You've got to do something." So we decided, let's put a one mill on the ballot. And fortunately, the township people voted and approved it for five years. And for five years, we've been getting a million dollars coming in each year to pave the roads. And I already mentioned, a lot of the roads have gotten paved and we still have a list yet to do. And hopefully, our residents will vote for a renewal of that one mill for another five years so we can continue the progress that we've made over the last few years.
Good. Chuck, Pat, do anything else to add?
Well, actually, Bill covered it. I mean, as far as with the millage for the road, again, it's an extra tax, but it's more than worth it. You know, for our township, we exist on what, 6.7 mills? That's good for the services that's provided. And one mill of that is for the roads. And this is for renewal, for maintenance, and hopefully, it does pass. And again, townships do, does not receive money for roads. So it's up to the state that was promised that the roads are going to be done, but we took on that responsibility. And it's up to the citizens to follow up on it if they wanted it.
Pat?
What I appreciate as a resident about what the board has done on this was that they take it to the voters. It's not seven people deciding that we're going to have, take money out of the general fund and do these kinds of things. So it will be, it is on your November ballot. If you've got your AV ballot already, you'll see it's there. If, over the next five years, we don't have any major things to do to the roads, then there's certainly going to be plenty of maintenance to do. So we've got some roads that when we started talking about this five years ago, like she and Whitewood, they were in good shape. They're beginning to crumble at the edges and things. If we can catch them now, it'll cost less to maintain them. But we're asking the residents to chime in on that and see if that's what they want to happen.
Good. And Chuck, you're going to go first on this next one. There's been a lot of discussion tonight about seniors and our aging population in our area. And you guys know the demographics of our township is that the township, there's been more seniors there and, you know, people love living here so much, they don't leave. So how do we get more housing and how do we get more people living out here so that, one, we can fill up our schools a little bit because, you know, the group of you and myself, we don't send kids to Pinkney Schools anymore and that happens all through our area. So how do we get more housing in our area? Where do we get more housing? Where do we get more affordable housing? And then also, you know, get more services for those of us that are here because once we can get to more housing, there's going to be more businesses that'll come, so.
Well, that's a good, I'm glad you brought that up. I just happen to be the chairman for the senior center, representative from our, from the board. We have a good senior program and as you're right, more and more seniors are requiring the services. As far as affordable housing, it's not even housing. We have a lot of empty nesters now, just so it's just said, where people want to stay in the community. And not, and not just seniors. We have some young people that want to come back in the community or stay in the community, but they can't afford a $350,000, $450,000 home. And for a population of 23,000 people in Hamburg, we don't have apartments. And, or, and if you want to call apartments affordable housing, be it as may, but we're trying to get apartments to come in. We did have one nice complex that was coming in, but the financing fell through, but it, things are still being talked about and there's, we could use things like this. We have, we have a assisted living being built, as you probably know, right now, semi-independent. And that's been pressure from people calling the township, asking about, they don't want to leave the area, but they're still going to need some semi-assisted, assisted living. So that's being built. And we were able, basically, to recruit that company to come in by offering, we had the property that was available and was a good location by the fire department, no less. And it's something like this, you have to be progressive, active, you have to be proactive and that's what we're trying to do for the seniors.
Good. Pat?
Well, I think that people are getting to the point now where maybe the McMansion fad is fading and we want a little smaller, maintainable home. And so I think the demand will come along with that and that will get the developers, Regency Village, which is the smaller houses and trying to be a community with saving the wetlands and the nature park, but building a neighborhood, is apparently selling very, very well. So I hope that this is a self-correcting situation.
Good. Bill?
What we need is two or three or four more Regency villages. I mean, those homes are sold, I think, before they even start building them. And it's the, you know where it's at.
Yep.
Over by the hardware store. The assisted living over by our fire station is nearing completion. We were hoping it would open up by, what, August or September, October type timeframe? And the virus kind of messed things up a little bit. And unfortunately, we tried twice to get apartments built at the old Hamburg school site, where the plans were to build a couple hundred apartments in there for younger people and some empty nesters to move into. We tried twice and both times it failed because of the difficulty of getting financing, the developers getting financing. So we're going to keep trying to do what we can. And we're fully aware of the desire and the need to do that, so we'll keep working.
Good. Folks, our lights going on a little bit. So Pat, can you, Pat, can you give about a 30-second thing as to why people should vote for you and then we'll go down the line?
Okay. I had the experience of working in the township. My background before local government, I had a career well, well before local government. I have a master's degree in biology and an MBA from the University of Michigan, a career in publicly traded corporations and private businesses in the pharmaceutical and computer technology industry. I've managed staff and I've controlled a million-dollar budget. But I want to say that my husband and I moved here 45 years ago because my dream was to live in a year-round home on a lake. I knew I wasn't going to be interested in driving three or four hours up to the north. So I can assure you that the health of our lakes and rivers is very important to me and having grown up in rural southeastern Michigan, so is keeping the township as country-like as possible and managing future growth.
Good. Bill?
Good question. What's next if I'm elected? I will try to maintain and keep the focus on the finances of the township. That's been one of my major focuses with the control book and so on. I want to keep the focus on the roads because as Patricia commented, a lot of our roads, you know, it's a constant maintenance, upgrade, and then replacing if and when that time comes. So we need to keep the focus there and we need to complete the paving of all 14 subdivisions. The last one we're doing this year is over at Alpine. And we had a couple more that time ran out because of the virus and got a late start. And I will continue to, I spend a lot of time walking around, talking to people and getting diverse opinions on different subjects. So I will keep doing that and keep the peace with the, with the board.
Good. Chuck?
I not only want to just stay representing people, I am part of, I am active part of the community. We all are. I've done a lot of volunteer work and I'm going to continue doing that, one way or the other. We do have some tasks that still have to be fulfilled and has been covered with our roads are the major ones. I emphasized earlier that it's not, with the millage for the bonds, but we also took over the SADs, as Bill mentioned, the special assessments. A lot of townships or communities won't even look at, as I say, we have, what, 15 special assessments and it's for subdivisions with private roads or county roads. The county's not, state, the county's not going to fix them. It's up to the community, up to that district, to follow up with the petitions and we're doing administrative work. I'm proud that we've been able to do that because a lot of communities won't even, like I said, won't even touch it. I'm still, I still have the world, the spirit, and I'm going to still be dedicated. I appreciate it and I'm looking forward to representing another four years.
Okay. This has been our second from last segment for the candidate forum for the Putnam, Pinkney, Putnam, Hamburg Health Chamber of Commerce. These were the Hamburg Township trustees and we had three of the incumbents right here. We had Chuck Menzies, Pat Hughes, and Bill Hahn, and we appreciate you and thanks for staying.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
For the last years in the clerk's office, I just want to say, I'd love you to vote for me, but please vote. And the office is hopping. AD ballots are being requested, but there's still time.
Yep, very good. We have one more segment. This is Bob Press. Mr. Bob Press. Welcome. My name is Rick Bowden, and I am president of the Pinky, Putnam, Hamburg Hell Chamber of Commerce. We've had a long night tonight. This is the last segment of our candidate forum that's being held on October 12th. And we've went through a number of different offices from some of the federal and national levels, some of the state offices, to county positions. And now, we were down to the trustees for the townships. We just finished Hamburg Township, and our last position is Putnam Township. Unfortunately, we've only got one of the candidates here, so, you know, I guess I should tell you that you should probably vote for this guy because he at least stayed and he waited, you know, and he was here. But, I also know he's got some attributes to talk about. So, we have a number of candidates that are running. There are actually two Democrats that are running, Jim Brady and James Robert. And then there are four, four Republicans that are running, Thomas Chambers, who's an incumbent, Sally Guyott, who was the clerk and is now running for a trustee position, Norm Klein, who's also Republican and an incumbent. He was going to be with us and had a family situation come up and couldn't be here. And then we have Bob Press that's here. So, Bob, we appreciate you being here. So, can you give us a little time this to tell us why people should vote for you? And then, all the questions go only to you.
Well, I want to thank you, Rick, and the chamber for doing this. My name is Bob Press. My wife, Mary, and I, I have two daughters, Deanna and Janice, we moved out to Putnam Township in 1986. Both daughters graduated from Pinky School System. We have six grandchildren. We just celebrated our 49th wedding anniversary. Our one daughter and our two daughters live with us. That's interesting. Both granddaughters go to Pinky School System. One is a senior and one of the captains on the varsity pound team. And the other is in the second grade. She has me wrapped around her finger. We are members of St. Mary's Church in Putnam Township. I belong to the men's club and also an usher at the church. I belong to the American Legion Post 419 of Pinky. My wife, Mary, belongs to the Royal Altar Society, is in charge of the Christmas bazaar. I retired from General Motors in 2003 after 31 years as a mill road welder. I served in the army for two years, 1970 and '71, and was discharged with an honorable discharge. I got involved with the township in 2004. 2004, I was appointed to the zoning board of appeals for four years. 2008, appointed to the planning commission. I've been a trustee for eight years. I have taken classes for zoning board of appeals, planning commission, and I still take classes every year for the township board. So, you can see that I keep up with new and helpful to township. I've been inspector of elections since 2008. I worked the elections, but I'm not running for trustee. I was on the board of review for one year. I've been on different committees, twice on law enforcement, twice on the senior center, and twice on the parks and recreation master plan for the village and township. I'm also liaison to the senior center. I work with our fabulous senior director, Patrice Rynch, to make sure everything is running smoothly. I used to get food from Kleenex twice a month before the pandemic. Now, I go six times a month to get food from the senior center food pantry. I fill the truck bed, rock cave closed the cover, the back seat is full, and sometimes the passenger front seat is full. I don't get any help loading the truck, but I do have help unloading it. The pantry is open two days a week, and I'm there both days passing out food. Now, I'm working with the senior director on a plan on opening up the center. It will not be a full opening, but a partial opening. Hopefully, it'll be soon. My priorities are to be a servant to all residents and be responsive to the needs and concerns of the residents, to keep Putnam rural and slow growth, improve our roads, not to raise new taxes, have a balanced budget, stay within that budget, and work on the play area in the township square to upgrade the air. We are looking into that right now. My main priority is to get a larger senior center because the one we, the one we have now is small and heavy. We have, we have to have more parking. Right now, with our small parking lot, sometimes the seniors have to park on the side of the road. This is unsafe. There is no room in the parking lot, the seniors go back home. We can build a new senior center next to the township or without going to the taxpayers for a millage. I am for conservative spending. I need to, we need to live with our means. We need to look for ways to eliminate waste and cut costs. Public safety is another concern for me. I do believe what we have right now is significant, but also need to look down the road for more service if the residents want it. But, we would have, need a millage for that. As a board, we are working on a play area in the township square. Right now, we are fixing what we have now, but also looking for ways to replace the new equipment, grant money, donations, and fundraisers. We do not have a millage for roads, but we work with the Livingston County Road Commission. We pay for part of the road, and the commission pays the other part. We are working on the roads. Also, we do not have a millage for law enforcement or a millage for the senior center. So, as a board, we are doing a good job with our taxpayer money. When we have a surplus for the budget at the end of the fiscal year, I would like to take part of that money and add it to the budget. I'm asking for your vote on November 3rd, so let's have a big turnout. Your vote counts, and it can make a difference.
Thank you, Bob. So, this is Bob Press, our candidate for Putnam Township trustee, who joined us this evening. Bob, a couple of questions because one of the things is, you talked about some of the millages, and the question is, is Hamburg Township was right here before you guys, and, you know, they had a road millage, and a lot of their roads have been repaired and fixed and upgraded. So, what do you see? Do you think that it should be go to the Putnam Township? You know, again, you said if the residents want it, should it go, should there be a road millage in Putnam Township?
Well, to get the same amount of money that Hamburg gets, we would have to have a 3.5 mill, and I don't see that going. We have a lot of private roads, and we have subdivisions. Now, if the people want a millage, will that cover the private roads and the subdivisions? That'll have to be decided by the voters. But, I really don't see a millage going through. We do a good job with what we've got because we only have a third, a fourth of what Hamburg has in our population and tax base.
Okay. You also mentioned the police department. So, is it adequate the coverage that Putnam Township is getting for police coverage now?
Yeah, we get a monthly report from the sheriff's department, and most of it's helping the fire department when there's an accident or a tree go down or, basically, we may have one burglary, maybe one domestic violence. And our sheriff, his job is to drive around the township, go up and down the roads, make sure he's visible. We just don't have him sitting on a corner looking for speeders.
Okay. Hamburg Township, when we talked to them recently, we talked about housing, and the same is true because in Putnam Township, Putnam Township is also Pinky Schools. And we, you mentioned your situation's a little different because you've got some next-generation kids living with you, but there are a lot of empty nesters in our area. And how do we work towards increased housing in our area so we can fill up our schools?
Well, we got to get the developers to come out. I mean, we do have property that's been up for sale, been up for sale for over a year, have had a developer come out and look at it. And like I said, we have to get the developers to come out and do low-income housing, which most developers want to do, the big homes where they make the big money, you know. And like I said, we have the areas of property that could be bought and developed, but there's nobody coming out. We've got one developer going right now, is the Girl Scout camp, and those homes are going to be close to a million bucks. So, I mean, yeah, it's going to get, I think, going to 99 houses in there, maybe. So, if they bring some kids in, that'll help the township out, the school system. But, we have to wait and see. Well, like I said, we do have property available. It's just a matter of, developers want to come out and do a low-income housing project.
Good. What other things do you think could help improve the functioning of Putnam Township?
Well, I would like to see money coming from the state, along with the county for roads. That would be helpful. And that's about the main thing right there for roads. You know, like I said, we have a lot of private roads, different roads. And another thing is, we have seven trash companies coming down our roads, seven different companies. And they tear up the roads for the good. Now, as for recycling, a lot of the trash companies are getting out of the business of recycling. And we used to recycle the township until they raised the price up so we couldn't afford it. So, maybe the county could come out with a plan for recycling and help pay for recycling. That'd be great, great.
Good. Bob, how about a wrap-up? Since you're our last person today, how about a wrap-up as to why people should vote for Bob Press?
I'm a servant to all the residents, and I will be responsive to the needs and concerns of the residents, to keep Putnam Township rural and small growth, to have a balanced budget, stay within that budget, not to raise any new taxes. I'm for conservative spending. Spend more money on the road without a millage, to keep our senior center growing, to get a larger senior center with more parking. That way, the seniors don't have to park in the road. And we can do this without asking for a millage. It can be done. And we're working on the play area in the township square. We are going to fix what we have right now, but also looking for ways to replace with new equipment, grant money, donations, and fundraisers. Public safety is another concern for me. What we have right now is working. If the residents want more, then we'll have to have a millage. We can't keep taking it out of the general fund. So, I'm asking for your vote on November 3rd, 2020. So, let's have a big turnout. Your vote counts, and it'll make a difference. Thank you.
Very good. That was our candidate for Putnam Township trustee. The only one that was with us tonight is Bob Press. So, we appreciate you being here tonight. So, you're going to have to give some grief to your fellow, fellow people there. So, folks, this wraps it up for tonight. We had quite an evening tonight. We had, I think, 11 or 12 different segments, and these were all the candidates that would be on the ballot for the Hamburg and Putnam Township areas, which includes the village of Pinky. These were all for contested races. Should mention that the village of Pinky has an election also, but there are no contested races in the village of Pinky. So, these were only contested positions. So, hopefully, you were able to be a more informed voter watching these segments. We ask for you to share them on social media. And, you know, I wouldn't be the president of the Chamber of Commerce if I didn't remind you to try and shop and dine M36 to support your local businesses. So, thank you, Rick Bowden, from the Pinky, Putnam, Hamburg Hell Chamber of Commerce. Good day.